Under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. So we have before us an agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. All in favor of adopting the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. We have an agenda. Also before us, we have a consent agenda, and this is typically the sundry items that come in front of the school board. One of the things we are grateful for is the gifts that the community provides to the district, and this month is longer list than most, so greatly appreciative of all the gifts that are provided, and thank the community for their support. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Allison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. This will require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye. And we now have a consent agenda. Next is item B, which is the public forum. If there's any members, I do not see typically if you're interested in speaking to the school board, there's some white cards on the table. I do not see is anybody that would wish to address the school board at this time. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to item C1, which is the Excellence of Financial Reporting Awards. Mr. Wald, is that going to you?
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Dr. Kasmercheck, we're proud to announce that the school district, again this year, has received the two prestigious award for public entities and school finance, and from GFOA and from Association of School Business Officers. This marks 18 years in a row, and I would love to take all the credit for that, but Dr. Kasmercheck was actually in this role last year when our funds were audited, our accounting was audited last summer. That audit results were presented to you in November. Our records were turned into the two organizations at that point, and we were just recently recognized for the two awards. So congratulations to the school board for expecting high expectations from our finance department on public accountability.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments, questions? Ms. Beloy?
Just to sort of reference, because I have absolutely no idea whatsoever. So the surrounding districts, do we know if they have achieved the same kind of excellence in financial reporting?
Yeah, I can answer that. Typically, districts have not pursued both of the award programs. So the Government Finance Officers Association and then the American Association of, what is it, Association of School Business Officials, that's a more typical one, the Association of School Business Officials. The government finance one is not typically pursued. There are a couple of school districts that are now pursuing both. White Bear Lake Schools has pursued both now for 18 years, and has gotten both distinctions for 18 years.
Do we know if MADEI or they have received one of these this year?
If they did, it would have been the ASBO distinction, but I'm not certain they did.
Maybe we should send this out to realtors?
Well, it's an important part when we talk about stewardship, you know, when we take seriously the management of public funds, and this is an indicator that we're doing a pretty good job of it.
I always see award-winning. I think that would be a good award.
Yeah, we're doing an award-winning job. We're certainly being recognized for our financial reporting, so.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Wald. With that, we will move on to informational item C2, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Kasmercheck?
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Before this evening's meeting, the school board recognized students who represented the district in state or national level contests, including Mega Moody Math Contest, girls' golf, boys' golf, trap and skeet shooting, girls' track and field team, boys' track and field team, and archery. The district has been celebrating strong finishes to the school year. We enjoyed welcoming proud parents and grandparents in for celebrations and 5th grade graduations. Older graduates who were celebrated include students in our Transition Plus program, at our area learning center, and at White Bear Lake Area High School. Congratulations to all of our graduates and families of graduates on your successes. Photos from the end-of-career ceremonies can be found posted on the district's Facebook page. In celebration of our graduates, enjoy this "What It Means to Be a White Bear Grad" video, featuring members of our class of 2018. The video was recorded at this year's senior walk, a great time during which graduating seniors walk the halls of their former elementary schools.
What does it mean to be a white bear grad?
Being a white bear grad means having white bear pride.
Being a white bear grad means forever being a bear fan.
Being a white bear grad means being best friends since kindergarten.
Being a white bear grad means that you've made friends and memories that you'll remember forever.
Being a white bear grad means always supporting your fellow bears.
Being a white bear grad means building a friendship over 13 years.
Being a white bear grad means to me having had received an excellent education in a loving and supportive community of friends, family, teachers, and parents.
Being a white bear grad means you're done. You're finished with high school, and you're ready to start a new life and do amazing things.
Go Bears!
All right, well stated, white bear graduates. Thank you, Marissa Anari, for that. Success has also come to retirement staff members who were celebrated at a recent retirement dinner. The district honored 40 retirees who served the district for a combined total of more than 858 years of service. Congratulations and thank you for your work on behalf of our students and families. The district will be well represented at upcoming community celebrations. Watch for our writing contest winners to be walking in Friday's Manitoba Days Parade, and be sure to read their award-winning articles in the White Bear Press this week. Also, stop by the district's Market Fest booth on Thursdays from June 14th through July 26th in downtown White Bear Lake to receive a free pencil and bear paw temporary tattoo, or several tattoos. Lots of folks stop by. We're excited for leadership meetings taking place this week that are focused on the strategic plan. We will work this summer and into the fall implementing change through a phased approach. We will continue to provide updates as we prepare to engage in the building level process that will begin in September, moving our already great buildings and programs to the next level. And finally, thank you to all of our students, families, and community members for a terrific 2017-18 school year. Have a great summer. Hard to believe we're here, huh?
Thank you, Dr. Kasmercheck. Is there any questions to the superintendent? I know we typically don't do that. I just wanted to make sure it's...
Not you throw a...
Yeah, throw you a little curveball there, right? It's summer.
Appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Can I add one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
So I was at Hugo when all of the seniors were coming through, and the kids absolutely love when they come through. They are so excited to see them, so I think that's a great tradition.
The seniors or the elementary kids?
The bear walk.
The students?
Both.
Yeah.
It's so cute. It's so cute.
Perfect. So we'll move on to D1, which is the discussion items. In this month, we have several policies coming before their first reading. Typically, for those, just so you know, policies get reviewed annually and come before the board. They come in two months. The first month is for the first reading, then gives the board members opportunity to ask questions regarding the policies, and then they come back for a vote the following month. So this month, we have several. I think what we're going to do this month, if you guys, is we're going to start with the top one. We'll move through them. If you have any questions, we'll ask those questions, and then we'll move on to the next one, just because there's several, and I want to make sure we kind of get through them and not have to jump back. So with that, for the first reading of Board Policy 404, Employee Background Checks, are there any questions regarding changes to that policy? Okay, we'll move on to 404 dot 1, Form Volunteer Criminal Background Checks. Are there any questions regarding to that policy? Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, that's just the particular form that goes with the first one, 404.
Perfect. I just want to make sure. So we'll move on to B, which is 420, and then Students and Employees with Communication or Infectious Diseases. Is there any questions regarding that policy? Mr. Wilson?
Not on the policy per se, but has our district modified its immunization requirements at all?
I see Ms. Daniels coming to the podium, so I'm sure that she has an answer for us. Welcome, Ms. Daniels.
Thank you, thank you for Chair Mullen and members of the school board. I'm not sure what you mean about modifying the immunization policy.
Some districts, I have heard are allowing students to come in without, you know, various immunizations that used to be flatly required statewide.
So we have to report to the Board of Health. There is an immunization policy too that isn't with this communicable disease one, and that explains kind of our timeline, and it talks about that parents have an opportunity to do a conscientious objector form, and some families choose to do that, and if they fill the form out, they are allowed to come to school without their immunizations, and if they do not fill out the form and do not get their immunizations, they can start school, but they have a, they're in a very tight timeline, and the nurses and the health aides work with the families and give them names of clinics and places where they can get their immunizations. So generally, we don't keep them out of school at first, but we will if they don't have them by the end of September usually. We start sending the letters out, so.
So it's just at the start. It's not that they can go through the year without them?
No, they can't unless they have them or have signed a conscientious objector form.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hold on, Ms. Daniels. Ms. Beloy, you had a question?
Didn't we already do a review of the immunization policy?
Yeah, that's already come before the school board.
Okay. Any other questions regarding B420? Okay, moving on to C, Policy 507, Corporal Punishment. Any questions regarding that policy?
I, oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Ellis?
I have a very small grammatical change in Section 3 under Exceptions. I think it should be from inflicting bodily harm to self or to another person. Just adding of the word or.
Dr. Kasmercheck, you got that? Okay. Anything else? All right. On to D513, Student Promotions Retention. Any questions?
I have.
Ellis?
And this is another very small one, under Section C, Item 2B. I believe the word fair is misspelled. It says valid and reliable, and I think it should be fair.
Thank you. Got it.
Anything else? All right, on to E, Policy 703, The Annual Audit. Any questions regarding that policy?
We're obviously doing well.
Number DF, which is Policy 706, Accepting of Gifts, or Gift, excuse me. Any questions regarding that policy? And last but not least, Policy 905, Advertising. Any questions regarding that policy?
I did have one, and I'm sure there's a separate policy addressing it. Everything about marketing advertising here, political advertising? I know it's generally prohibited in public schools, but is there a separate policy regarding it?
Separate policy.
No?
Okay. Any other questions? So I know there's some changes. These policies, I should believe, will be back in the July meeting to be voted on. All right. With that, we will move on to E1, which is the operational items, which is the action on the preliminary 2018-2019 budget. Mr. Wald?
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kasmercheck. In early May, well, May 15th to be precise, we presented the preliminary budget to the Executive Finance Committee and reviewed budget at that time. We brought the budget to the work session on May 23rd and reviewed more specifics of the preliminary budget at that time. So today, we're going to walk through a kind of overview of the budget, and you'll have opportunity to approve the preliminary budget tonight. The proposed budget is based on a 2% formula increase in fiscal year 19. Now, that was approved by the 2017 legislature, so that's in place, and that for the increase in the allowance for 2020 is really just an assumption. A lot will change between now and 2019-20 school year, and so we're assuming a 1%, but that may be higher or lower than that, and we'll make adjustments to the budget as we go, depending on what the legislature decides at that point. We did get an additional school readiness plus grant, and so we're excited to be expanding that program to Vatness Elementary this year. We just received a grant also from MDE to support our CNA Certified Nursing Assistant Program, so good things happening in pursuing grants. And enrollment adjustments might cause us to adjust this, our revenue in the future. So we'll see what happens this summer, and when we begin school in the fall, we may be coming to you with modified budget mid-year based on new revenue. Okay. So looking at the big picture?
Mr. Wald, I have a question.
Sure.
Generally, are the figures that you're presenting here tonight the same that were presented at the work session?
Yeah, same numbers we looked at in May, May 23rd work session.
Ms. Beloy?
I have a quick question. Based on our numbers from end of year last year to beginning of year of this year, what are we kind of expecting the change to be for enrollment?
About 175 students.
Over...
Increase from the end of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Newmaster, hold. You know, I think we should probably do is probably get a motion to accept the budget, and we can go under discussion and start asking questions if that's all right. So with that, I think the recommended action is to approve the fiscal budget, 2019 preliminary budget as presented. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Is it a motion by Mr. Wilson? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Ms. Newmaster?
Okay. I read through this as carefully as I could, and of course, it's incomprehensible many things to me, but I'm always looking at, what do you do when something happens that's not in your budget, just like a household? The furnace blows up, you've got 50 more kids at Lake Ayers than you expected, you don't have enough textbooks, whatever. So my question that I noted after reading through several sections of this, there's always that line that says other expenditures, and I think there was somewhere like plus or minus. So where in the budget is the stretch room for more FTEs or sudden expenditure in that other expenditures section?
Yeah, well, so when we predict what our general, what our formula revenue will be, if we have an influx of students this summer and September comes around, and we have 50 more students than we expect, and we have to hire additional FTEs, that happened this past year.
Right.
Then we adjust. We know we'll have a revenue adjustment that will take care of those expenses. We also have, we have a, you know, we have a fund balance, and so that would protect us in those situations that we can draw into the fund balance for the time being until the revenue catches up.
And I was thinking of, you know, those things that over my empty years in the district, all of a sudden, they'll need another half a classroom or something like that. But now we've got a bigger thing in front of us, our strategic plan, which adds some things and drops some things, and there are new expenditures if we really follow our aspirations and wishes. So I just wondered, where does that fit in there as we spent the last year looking at what we were dreaming about reaching for?
Yeah. Well, Dr. Kasmercheck may want to comment on strategic plan.
Yep. So we, when you build a budget of this size, you do, we did build in some contingency for additional staffing based on what we think might happen with enrollment, but we're, we generally are conservative on both sides of the equation. Last year's a good example. We said we had 330 students. We had a 330 student increase over the prior year, and we needed to add some staff at the end of the summer to accommodate for that change. We go ahead and do that, and then we bring to you a revised budget that reflects the changes, and that's what we do mid-year. You asked a question about what happens if something happens with a facility. Well, we budget a certain amount of money that we use the term undedicated. It's there in case something were to happen, so we're able to cover that. And again, if something were to happen unexpectedly that would throw the budget off, we would make the adjustment and bring it to the board. Strategic plan, that work is ongoing right now, so the next couple of days we'll be working on that, and there will ultimately be staff changes. We try to make changes within what we have right now. If there are additions, that will be worked in as well. So those types of changes would be, you'd be updated on that, particularly in mid-year, mid-year adjustment, we'd explain to you what those changes were. But as we're starting out a new school year, just in a few months, we don't anticipate there being major changes leading into the fall, and if there were, we would certainly come to you and explain those changes to you related to the strategic plan.
I was just wondering whether it's more mental health assistance or a particular kind of support or a particular technology or whatever, where in the budget is that? It's got to be there someplace.
When we have, you know, generally we have a balanced budget, so if we're talking about adding significant expenditures without adding revenues, then we're going to have to also look at reducing expenditures, so those are some given taken. To do that with staffing, that takes some time to implement those kinds of things, so some of the more expensive changes might come down the road versus kind of way this fall.
And I understand some of it might be a levy or whatever.
And some of it might be using existing funds differently. So I'll give the example, and I don't know if you want to talk about this at all, Tim, we're talking about adding emergency manager position, and we'll give you an update on that at some point here, but we can do that within the existing budget, and that's a direct result of the work on the strategic plan in addition to some of the work we've been doing internally on safety and security measures. So there's an example of a position that we can fund within our budget, and it's certainly related to the strategic plan. We can do that within the existing funds.
Well, I looked at this and all the different pieces and wondered, where is that magic stretchy part that fits some of these new things we think about, or, you know, maybe we're still counting on the state coming up, like they did at the end with a little more for school security or something like that.
Yeah, and then that got vetoed, so, and I don't think there's been any talk of a special session, but yeah, you know, a budget of, you know, what's the bottom line? The budget is 100, general fund budget of 106 million. Stretchy part you're talking about, a budget is black and white. At the same time, there is some flexibility within it, and that's purposely built in. It can't all be entirely black and white, so, yep.
Mr. Wald, did you have anything else on the budget?
Well, I can present more, or if you're feeling comfortable moving on, we can move on.
Is there, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Blaine Marge, she got me thinking about the details here. This is back on the check register, and IRS payment for 671,832. Is that once a year? We don't pay that monthly, do we?
Tom, do you want to come up? IRS payment back in the check register from the consent.
IRS payment happens every twice a month.
Twice a month? Okay. Same for the state then as well?
That's federal tax plus the social security.
Okay, and then same for the state, right?
Payroll taxes.
Yeah, okay. Wow.
Now, there's a handful of big payments that come at payroll time.
Is there any other questions regarding the budget? And I know that we've went through all this extensively in the work study. I know that the numbers haven't changed, so want to make sure that if there's any other questions that we can...
I will just add, just for the sake of the board, a reminder that we're projecting a balanced budget. That's an important element to the board. It's important to us administratively that we continue to present a balanced budget to the school board, and if we look forward to the next two years, you'll see there's also a balanced budget. If we look forward to three years to 2022, we're projecting a negative balance. That is not atypical at this time, when you're looking three years out to project negative, and we suspect that will change. If you look back to last year's notes, you'll see Dr. Kasmercheck presented a negative budget for 2021, and that now is projecting positive. So we start to get more, less conservative as we get closer to the year on projected revenue.
May I add one thing, Mr. Wald? So, and I think you have a slide on this, so at some point you may want to...
On what?
You have that...
This is on future budgets?
Yeah, just you have the highlighted, several lines highlighted right there, and we can't read it, but in your packet, it's in your packet as well. But the figure Mr. Wald is talking about is the, well, you could look at line 29, or you could look at line 53. If we just look at line 29 purely, and not taking into account any use of fund balance, so to be looking three, actually four fiscal years out and to be projecting just slightly under a million-dollar deficit, that's a pretty good place to be. If you've been around a little while, you might typically see that be more like 2 to 3 million, and even then, at that point, we don't necessarily overreact to those out years, but we're talking about roughly a million-dollar projection, a deficit projection, and knowing that our revenue projections have been relatively conservative in those years. So what Mr. Wald is saying is those out years, things look pretty good as we go forward, so we're presenting a balanced budget tonight, and the outlook looks pretty positive going forward as well.
It's also important to note that our operating levy is an important part of this budget. It counts for about $14 million in revenue, and so without our operating levy being in place, this would be a very different-looking budget that we'd be presenting tonight. So that was approved by the voters originally in 2007 at 63% support. We knew this last November at 81% support, and that levy is in place now till 28, 29 school year. So we're really thankful to our board for pursuing that operating levy and to our community for voting positively for it.
Ms. Beloy, I know that you had a question.
I just had a question about the special education budget. I know we're seeing increases in that, and I know there's been some talk within the state legislature about extra funding for that. Do we know where we're at on that? What kind of a percentage increase are we looking at?
Yeah, there was no changes in, no significant changes in special ed funding. The legislature has talked about getting, making a move on the cross subsidy, the amount of general ed revenue that supports special ed, and they left this legislative session, as I understood it, saying priority in the next legislative session.
It's always a top item on Minnesota Association of School Administrators, the School Board Association, and other groups. It's an important piece. In fact, we passed a resolution here, I believe. In fact, we passed a resolution here, I believe, would have been before the election, so I think some of you weren't on the board yet, but we passed a resolution supporting MSBA's stance on the, on that issue. There was an overhaul of special ed funding a handful of years ago and we're still, that's still being phased in, so we see special ed revenue increasing by probably five to six percent a year, whereas the general fund is increasing at, you know, for, you know, if we're lucky, two percent a year. But still, it's not, the, the, the increase in costs is far outpacing that, even that five to six percent increase in, in revenue year over year. So it's a, it's a serious issue nationwide and clearly it impacts us. Our cross subsidy is in the neighborhood of a thousand or eleven hundred dollars per student, which equates to in the neighborhood of ten or eleven million dollars, so it's real, it's a real issue.
So how do we see, how do we see addressing that over the next decade?
Federal and state legislators need to continue that, that effort. It's a, I, I think it's gaining some traction, I think there will probably be some, some changes in the next few years, it just, it's revenue dependent though, there's only, there's only so much, revenue pie is only so big, so if funding gets put towards special education, that'd be wonderful, but then it will not go elsewhere and that's, that's the, that's the debate at the legislature, either within education or outside of education.
Thank you.
Mr. Chapman? Well, your presentation kind of got derailed, so, um, if, is there anything?
We covered a lot of the important points.
Is there, so you did hit on everything, is there anything else that, I mean, we know from the work study, but, you know, I know we've got, you know, the cable audience and, and whatnot, is there anything else that you can think of that didn't get hit on that folks should probably know?
Uh, there's a few, thank you, there's a few things I'll point out, the nutrition services fund is fund two and we are projecting a negative budget, nutrition services, but it's because of some one-time spending on equipment, so we have a comfortable fund balance in nutrition services, we're, we're operating within, within our revenue and we're gonna be purchasing some equipment at one of our elementary schools and high school, high school building some serving equipment and so that's gonna spend down our fund balance just a hair, but we think we're, we have enough flexibility to do that. And the same with our, we're not, we're not increasing meal prices at all, last year we presented a price increase and, for meals and we don't have to do that this year, so we're really pleased to maintain even pricing. Community services budget is fund four, we're projecting a negative balance of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars and that's an interesting situation, we have a really positive fund balance, it's probably okay for us to spend it down a little bit, but what we don't want to do is have a structurally unbalanced budget within community ed. What's happening is our participation is growing really fast in community ed. It's exciting that our early childhood programs are developing quickly, our extended day programs, as well as our middle school flex program. So what it's, what it's pressuring us to do is create more supervisory positions so that the program's in good shape. What we believe will happen, we'll spend this down a little bit on the front end and we'll eventually create enough revenue in those programs to balance that out. So we expect over the next three years that that, the increase in revenue right now will balance out, or the increase in expenditures, I should say, will balance out with the increase in revenue that we experience. Yeah, so with that.
Ms. Beloy, I think you had a question.
This might be for Mr. Cooper, I know we're trying to hire for flex and all those different things, how are we doing on, on filling those roles with the big expansion that we're having in, in the flex program and the early education program and the preschool program? Like, I see the signs everywhere that we're still hiring, we've been hiring all year long, how are we doing with, with filling those positions? Didn't make, didn't mean to make you nervous.
No, that's okay. No. Um, our early childhood is busy time for hiring for any part of the school district right now, so Kate Anderson, early childhood supervisor, busy filling those positions, we've already had emails to go to HR for nomin, or not nominations, but hiring actions for a couple of teachers for our new positions, our flex and extended day programming, we're always hiring. We see a lot of turnover with those positions, especially our part-time positions, our site lead positions, our activity lead positions and more of our supervisor roles are filled, we're always looking for part-time staff because we have a lot of turnover in those areas and a lot of schedule changes and things, but our staffing looks good for the summer.
Do we feel like we're good for summer going into, to fall for all these programs? Okay.
Any other questions regarding to the budget? Okay, we've got a motion and a second, is there anything else that you wanted to add, Mr. Wald? Got a motion and a second, this will require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
Okay, we have a, Bob, we have a budget. With that, we will move to operational item E2, which is the action on Ramsey County Children's Mental Health Collaborative Joint Powers Agreement. Is this, Ms. Daniels?
Good evening, Board Chair Mullin, members of the school board, Dr. Kazmercheck. Tonight, in your packet, you have a copy of the Joint Powers Agreement from the Ramsey County Children's Mental Health Collaborative. The RCCMHC and the district have been partners for many years, together we've collaborated to bring services and supports to the school districts and partners in Ramsey County with the mission to work across systems and with families to, to meet the complex needs of our youth who are at risk of developing significant mental health concerns. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Wendy Goodman, she's the executive director of the collaborative and she's done yeoman's work in the last couple of years, really building some structure around the collaborative and she's gonna talk a little bit about the collaborative and answer your questions about the JPA. And just so you know, we have had our attorney Mick Walzberger involved and gone over the JPA and he has recommended approval and that our surrounding districts, Roseville, Moundsview, North St. Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale, nine sixteen have approved the JPA, they have, hadn't approved it and St. Paul is about to approve it in the next week or so, right? Yeah, and so they're also looking at it, so, and those are the, the six school districts that are all in Ramsey County.
Perfect.
Wendy, hi.
Hi, welcome.
I have to apologize, I need bifocals, I think, you're all very blurry when I take this off, but I need them to see here, so I'm going to do seeing this instead of seeing you.
For all means, keep them off.
Join the club, we have jackets.
Okay. So, it's, it's up to you how you'd like to handle this, if you'd like to just kind of talk through what's in your packet and ask questions, if you have questions, or I can give you kind of the very brief version of who it is, who we are and what is, that we do.
Why don't you start with the brief version and then we'll just move through that?
Sounds good. You have in your packet something that has Minnesota at the top and so I'm, as I talk, I'm just gonna walk through that with you. So, White Bear Lake has been a part of our collaborative since nineteen ninety-seven. We started off as an inter-agency agreement that included all of the school districts, including nine sixteen and St. Paul Public Schools, as well as the county. And in twenty-ten, in order to protect our governing board members, it was decided that we needed to enter into a joint powers agreement, become a joint powers entity. I wasn't there at that time, so I, I don't really know exactly how that transpired, but I, my understanding is that it needed to be handled quickly, they wanted to get that protection in place quickly and so St. Paul Public Schools and the county entered into the agreement right away and the intention was always to bring all of the other school districts on and then it didn't happen. So as part of that new restructuring in twenty-ten, there was only one representative of all the suburban schools on the collaborative and there were two representatives of St. Paul Public Schools on the collaborative. So this new way of looking at things is giving one vote to every school district that's in Ramsey County. And it's really kind of getting us back to where we're supposed to be. So when you look at state statute and, and how collaboratives are supposed to operate, there's only one children's mental health collaborative that you can have per county, that's us for Ramsey County, and so because of that, we really do need to be inclusive of all of the school districts. And at the, at the kind of middle section of your page there where it talks about, you kind of see our symbol, the RCCMHC symbol, to the right of that, it'll show you who the board members are currently on our collaborative and so we do have corrections is on our board, social services, county commissioner, public health, all of the school districts, as I said, cultural outreach chair and advisory council chair, so that would be community and providers, that's our advisory council, fam, two family services committee chairs and one young person. If you flip over, and now I'm kind of looking at the, the arrow page, the up and down arrow page, the benefits of partnering with the collaborative and what the risks might be and the liabilities and some of our recent work. So just really briefly touching on those pieces, one of the reasons that we decided to become a joint powers entity is because we can bring in our own funds straight from foundations and straight from the state and from the federal government, we can manage our funds ourself, we save a lot of money in doing that, we can purchase separate liability insurance and that separate liability insurance covers our governing board and we are protected by liability caps. So what that basically means for those of you who might not understand is that in the past, if you were part of a collaborative and for some reason an entity wanted to sue the collaborative, they could sue all the different partners of the collaborative and add it all up and so that's not how it is anymore, that's capped as a public entity and so the, the collaborative would be sued and our liability insurance would cover that. So really, you know, we've got a little over a million dollars sitting in the bank right now, we have a number of foundations that are very, very excited about doing cross-system work, work with whole family wellbeing, work that addresses trauma and toxic stress for youth. There's several foundations that are eager to take some of these monies and, you know, expand on them by giving a match and I think we're in a really good place to start having that conversation. If you take a peek at the right-hand side of your page, there's a light blue box and kind of coming down the pike there to, to look forward, there, there was a system of care grant that the state of Minnesota won recently, twelve million dollars, they have a six million dollar match, so about eighteen million that we're looking at there. Ramsey County is one of the groups that is a possible recipient of those funds because we were one of the signers on to that grant and so MDE is, is participating in the work at the state level and at the county levels, our schools should be involved in deciding how those funds are spent locally. We also were part of the collaboration across the school-linked mental health grant recently that was awarded to Ramsey County and so we're gonna be supporting with dollars, money and also staff time to really increase collaboration across all of the school districts. So I think that might be us in a nutshell. I'll let you ask questions, everything else should be on, on your papers. And I will, I will apologize for one thing, I was told that we have a typo, uh, so in the liability section at the very bottom there, it should read two hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred, which is our, our operating expenses, not two hundred and thirteen thousand five thousand. And of course, I'm talking about White Bear Lakes, not Moundsview, so apologize for that as well.
Okay, we've, is there any questions? Mr. Wilson?
A tangential question, I hope no one thinks I'm sharpshooting because I truly am not and I was waiting to hear out the joint powers agreement, I know we're a member of a different number of collaborations, but check number nine-three-eight-two-nine written to Moundsview Public Schools for over twenty-eight thousand dollars, what, what is that for? Do we know? And if you don't know now, that's fine, you could email me either individually or the board as a whole.
Is that under the check registry?
Yes.
So why don't we get this, why don't we deal with this issue, we can talk about that on the other side of this?
Absolutely.
Okay? Or we could talk about it offline, how's that, make sure. Is there any questions regarding the, Mr. Chapman?
Just so I'm checking, tracking correctly, the first joint powers, or the joint powers was put into place in twenty-ten, is that correct and then?
Right, so there've been three installments, so that, when we were very first formed, it was an inter-agency agreement in ninety-seven and then when we became a joint powers entity, that was twenty-ten and this is kind of our, our attempt to say, okay, it's time to get back to our roots.
So, so then this is an amended, restated joint powers agreement, the way it sounds because of the governance issue, representation, so on and so forth. Any other material changes compared to past practice or the prior JPA that would be material for us to know?
I don't think so.
Okay.
As an interesting aside, I would say that since twenty-ten, one of the things that our collaborative has become known for across the state is our family engagement and engagement of communities of color. And just as an example, we grew our families that work on policy work and, and that sort of thing from about five families that used to meet for Chinese food and, and talk about the, the policy issues to several hundred that are very, very engaged in the collaborative. And recently, we had a resource fair that I think you maybe shared some information about, that was our first resource fair in the suburbs and although we didn't have anybody standing there with our clicker, counting people, we handed out eight hundred yogurts that day, so there was a big group of families that were able to participate and we're really excited to try to bring that same thing to, to White Bear Lake.
Ms. Fahy?
Oh, Jessi. Go ahead. First. Okay, yeah, and I'm, in terms of our contribution, I know I had a couple of questions for Kathleen before, because I know you can make a monetary or in-kind and I believe we've been doing like in-kind contribution. Kathleen, could you just explain a little bit about what we've done in terms of the contribution?
Right, we've just provided space and the ability to make appointments through our clerical at different schools, so we provide maybe a phone and some space and, and that, you know, a student can call from class to come and meet or a pass system or something, so it's, that's the kind of support we've offered so far and then just time, like my time.
Going to the board meetings.
Yeah, yeah, and so that would be in-kind contribution too, because those are monthly meetings and then reading the materials and other meetings that I participate in and also we have a couple of our social workers that will stand in my place or go to the meetings also.
Thank you.
Ellison?
I just have a question about how this sort of collaboration and community engagement will be beneficial as we see mental health issues on the rise for students? So for kids in White Bear, how will our participation in this collaborative help to, to meet that, to meet those needs as they're, they're rising?
So there's a, a couple ways that I think of right off the bat and that is that increased communication across systems is always a good thing. And whether or not we have data protection, privacy laws and those things that we have to really be mindful of, having people in the same room at the same time where they can speak and, and share about what the different gaps and the needs are, that's, that's just, you know, a win right there. As far as direct help for families, we are all about increasing access to resources like with the resource fair that we did, we'll be bringing family trainings into White Bear Lake and hopefully partnering with the district to be able to do those kinds of trainings. We do those right now in St. Paul, twice a month. We offer stipends so that we encourage families to attend, parents get a, a meal and there's all kinds of different trainings around de-escalation and identifying, you know, red flags, mindful parenting, those types of things. And all of that has been designed and continues to be designed by community for community so that we're not just teaching at people, but we're using the, the wisdom of community and, and making that a part of what, what is needed. And then two other pieces, one is that when we, when we polled our families who are of the deepest need, families who are really in the most chronic need for support, we have found that about ninety percent or more of our parents also have mental illness and/or trauma histories. So part of what we've really been looking at, at the collaborative is how to use funds and also match funds from foundations to do some of the work around whole family wellbeing, which is different than what is typical. Typically, we work with the one identified patient and, you know, you, you don't work with the whole family. So whole family wellbeing and then the cross-system piece is really important because some of our families have between twelve and fifteen different providers that they're trying to juggle, they don't know who they all are and they fall through the cracks. So this is the kind of work that supports that kind of a concern. So, this is the kind of work that supports that kind of a concern.
Can I give a couple of examples? I just wanted to talk about the film a little bit, the whole story, which Wendy was very involved in producing and.
I'm a producer.
But we've used the film, if you haven't seen any part of it, we have used it in our parent advisory council to do some training. And we've also used it in-house to train social workers, psychologists and some of our counselors. There's different parts of it. It's all divided up into different sections and it's a wonderful training tool that is provided to us by the collaborative. So, we have that. And then, we also know that some of our families who are in most need also move around between our districts out here in the suburbs. And so, when we get to have those touchpoints with other districts on the services that we're providing, whether it's our neighboring district or with us, we're providing safety nets for families that are going to be our kids maybe next week or our kids that are going to be Roseville's kids next week. So, the more we can work together and provide those supports for all of our families, the stronger we'll be as a county, which is, you know, really what we're working at here. So, and I have, I think that was it because you mentioned the resource fair. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, please.
I was just going to add the one piece that I know that a number of families that we have engaged from White Bear Lake have been homeless and living in shelter. And those families in particular would be, would get the kind of support that they need through a collaborative because that's that basic need piece that can really trigger some of those behavior issues that we see in school and in the community.
Ms. Beloit.
So, I think that the collaborative sounds like an excellent idea. My question is, we have a lot of families and we have a lot of students that are in need for one thing or another. The biggest thing, even from my own personal experience, the biggest hurdle is to find out where those resources are, where do they go, who do they talk to, what's available. So, how does this affect that? And does this bring things together into one piece where we've got a list of people that you can go to because of this collaborative or how does it affect that?
So, we also work with the Family Services Collaborative, which you are also a part of. And one of the things that the Family Services Collaborative and our collaborative are working on right now is a partnership with 211 and also, you know, doing something to bring resources closer to communities so that not only do they find out about what resources that are out there, but they can easily access them. And the resource fair is another way of doing that. The collaborative operates on three levels. So, we're operating on a policy level. We're operating on a, you know, a funding level where we're putting funds into the community and giving money to agencies to do the work that our board members say, yes, this needs to be done. But then, a small part of what we do is around family engagement and outreach and community outreach, and that maybe is a little bit more about what you're talking about. And we definitely do through family trainings, bringing in the resources, the resource fairs. One of the pieces that we have only done in the past is a urban resource fair. We had our first suburban resource fair, but we know that there are families in White Bear Lake that are so far away from Roseville that that's not something that's helpful for them. So, what we would like to do is to be able to have one resource fair in each school district that's reliable and we know that it's coming. And that way, even if there was a social worker working in the school that said, you know, you need to get this particular screening, or we want you to get access to this agency and this agency, we know that there's a resource fair coming up next month and it's going to be at this, in this school district and you can find it here. That with six school districts, we should be able to have that happening regularly throughout the year and have families be able to have that kind of access.
So, how do we specifically get that information downstream into?
To our families.
To the people that are in the schools in order for them to provide the information to the students and families?
So, we do, we did, we do have our own resource fair. We've had them for every other year and invited every one of our counselors, social workers, psychologists in our own staff. We've had them in this very room. And the one that Wendy did was so much bigger and had so many more vendors and providers and many things for families and children. So, we're going to replicate her fair in our own community. But we, what we've done in the past is had it partly during the school day so that our staff can actually attend in the afternoons, like had it at two-thirty or three, and then they can come at the end of their day. You know, we were talking about that effect at our last meeting because this one was on a Saturday. And even though we advertised it to all of our staff and all of our families, it was more difficult for our staff at a busy time of year to come. So, we've got to figure out a way that we can, they're mandate our staff to come during part of a school day and then have it in the evening and get our families transported because transportation, we know for some of our families is a big challenge. And we did give away gas cards, over two-hundred gas cards to families that were able to attend. And they really loved that because then they felt like, you know, they had some support if they did have a vehicle.
I mean, that's my concern because, I mean, even if the staff knows that this is what's going on, if they, if you have a family engagement or there's something else going on and you can't make it, how does that information get to them so that they know even if they can't attend, these things are available to their?
That's the important work of our social workers in our buildings. That's exactly the job that they do is look for resources and connect families to resources
But that's new.
All the time. We've, well, elementary, it's new. We've had social workers in our secondary buildings for many years and we've had some district-level social workers for many years. We've increased our social workers.
Yeah, but a lot of times at the elementary level, that's the level to get those kids young.
Absolutely. And our school psychs used to play both roles for school psychology and they'd pay, put the social work hat on and connect. So, that's where we, this year, we were able to separate those two roles and add those social workers so, because we know that there's an increasing need. So, we're working all the time on it. And we did have our liaisons also replicate the flyer and make some personal calls to families too that we were doing the resource fair. So, we're working on, you know, every, trying to get it out to as many families as possible in three languages.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Newmaster.
And I'm just wondering, for staff that participate in this, to be more encouraging, wouldn't this count as part of the mandated renewal units in mental health understanding?
Well, if it was training, it could.
I didn't know.
There's not a lot of training components to it. You can find out lots of information and make touchpoints and make contacts, but.
Would be a good thing.
Renewal is about actual prevention training and things like that, identification. So, we actually have started now doing an annual mental health training with.
Right.
All staff. So, that does count for that renewal.
It did have the presentations, even when I was here at Central on different things. But I'm just wondering if there's at least like a renewal unit credit or something for attending this. It wouldn't replace.
Probably CEUs we've given for attending. Yes, for attendance, we've given CEUs in the past, Avis has.
Sounds like that's, because often the classroom teacher is the one that knows who's couch surfing and staying with Grandma.
And they're hungry for more information. They definitely are. And it's, there's a lot of challenges in finding time in the limited PD days that we have because we have many things that are very, very important for our staff to be trained on. So, we have secured a half-day for all staff annually now, and that makes me very happy because that's the first time, even though we've had bits and pieces over the years, that is a true commitment within our district when we have a person who has been named as a PD, you know, actually plans that day and then has been offering those Wednesday night. We have Wednesday night free events for the last six months at North Campus on mental health information. And staff gets CEUs, our parents actually can get paid for that and then families, you know, it's open to the public. So, they're just gaining momentum, but we had five. We had actually, one we canceled in June, so we had five. And numbers vary, but we're working hard at getting the work.
Sounds good.
And we maintain an online resource library for parents and for providers that is full of information that can be accessed anytime, as well as a resource guide that we develop each time we do a resource fair. So, at this point, we update it twice a year. We will be updating that six times a year, which is really important because a lot of our agencies don't take the time to update all these resource hubs that you find out there, and so, the information is old. Providers don't go there, teachers don't, you know, they stop using it because it's such old information. By using the family collaborative and our collaborative to do some of that updating and to keep resources fresh and new, we'll be able to get it, you know, in front of the families more readily.
And Avis developed our own internal resource that she has sent out to internal staff. So, they have everything at their fingertips. It's pages long, so it's online and you can click on and get information for all kinds of resources. It's for teachers, counselors, psychs, everybody.
Any other questions? With that, we have a recommended action to move approval of the joint powers agreement between Ramsey County Children's Mental Health Collaborative and the White Bear Lake area schools. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman. Ms. Newmaster?
Second.
Will do the second. This will require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye. And with that, the motion is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, item E3 is the action on the OPEB trust to PFM. Mr. Wall.
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Dr. Kasmercheck, in 2008, the legislature allowed school districts to sell funds, sell bonds to be used for other post-employment benefits. That's where the acronym OPEB comes from. In October 2008, the district sold forty million dollars in OPEB bonds and invested those funds with Wells Fargo Bank. At the May 21st work-study session, Don Hanson and Jason Palmer from PFM Asset Management introduced themselves in their investment approach to the board. Administration is recommending tonight that we move the remaining funds to PFM Asset Management. PFM has significant experience working with public entities. They manage funds in Midzloff Plus, which is the Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund. That's where we invest our liquid assets. So, tonight, we're recommending we move our OPEB funds from Wells Fargo Bank to PFM Asset Management.
Okay. Is there, actually, I think we should probably vote on, get a recommendation on the table and we'll open it up to questions. So, with that, the recommended action is to approve the OPEB investment agreement to transfer funds from Wells Fargo to PFM Asset Management. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellison. Is there any questions, comments? Mr. Wilson?
Just one. When I was reading through it, we are the client, PFM is the advisor, and then there was a requirement in there for a third-party custodian. Who is that? Or who will it be?
I'm not sure what that's referring to.
You know where you.
Services of the advisor, that section?
No, that's PFM. But if, no.
Page two.
It's deeper into it.
Second paragraph.
Page two, second paragraph.
The client agrees to legally appoint a custodian.
That's PFM. I read it and then you can't find it.
It's page two, it's second paragraph. Did you find it?
Mm-hmm.
You find it, Tim?
I did find it. We'll have to get the answer to you on that one.
That's fine.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the agreement, the transfer? Mr. Chapman.
Just wondering, and this probably came up or was talked about at the work-study, how did we come across this particular firm or how did we, were we aware of them from past lives, so to speak? Or how did we, this is not a firm I've ever heard of, but I'm not in the investment world.
Yeah, PFM is heavily involved in school finance in Minnesota, as Tim indicated. The Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund, I think, I think has in the neighborhood of 1.5 billion dollars of school district reserves. So, they've been around a long time. They've been the only custodian, well, I'm using the word custodian, they've been the only asset manager, custodian of the funds of the Midzloff, the Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund, which is sponsored by MSBA, MESA and Masbo. So, they've got a long history in Minnesota. And interestingly, back in 2008, when school districts had the ability to issue bonds for their OPEB liability, PFM was just simply not, they didn't have that portion of their business ready to go out of the chute. So, we, White Bear did that back in '08. So, your choices back in '08 were Wells Fargo, PERA and PMA, I believe, were the three choices. At the time, Wells Fargo was probably the right choice. Subsequent to that, then PFM became an option. And again, hindsight, if in '09, for example, it had been done in '09 and PFM was ready to go, PFM would likely have taken much of the work that Wells Fargo had gotten. So, PFM took their time in getting ready to offer this particular vehicle from, because it was a little bit outside of what they did, but they've got a long history of managing school district and other public entities, liquid assets.
Yeah, I know they talked about it that night. I just wasn't sure if we had gotten a recommendation from a particular entity, other school district or whatever, but it sounds like.
Yeah, they've been around.
Well, familiar.
Yeah, they've been around a long time.
Ms. Ellison?
I just have a general question, Mr. Wall, about these types of contracts. Do we need our lawyer to look at these contracts before we approve them or at what, in what type of situation does our lawyer review these before we approve them?
Yeah, our attorneys review these contracts before we.
Okay. Okay. Just informational. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the action? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. This will require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye. Okay. Motion is adopted and accepted. Next on the agenda is operational item E4, which is action on the dairy contract. Is that, Mr. Wall?
Nutrition Services put out a bid for dairy products on May 2nd, 2018. Their current milk vendor is AgroPure in St. Paul. Three vendors returned bids and the summaries of those bids are in your board packet. Bridget Lane, our Nutrition Services Coordinator is to tell you, is here to tell you about it and answer any questions. Ms. Lane?
Members of the board, hi. I'm here to talk about our dairy contract. It's the same vendor luckily that we've had for the past many years. They came in the lowest, so we're very pleased with that number. And we have currently 12 AgroPure milk coolers on site, so it saves us another about forty-five thousand dollars in purchasing new milk coolers on top of the lowest bid price, so.
Okay. There is a recommended action to move to approve the dairy bid to AgroPure Industry, totaling estimated at one-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-and-forty cents for the 2018-2019 school year with an option to renew two additional years. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Ellison?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. Is there any discussion regarding this? Okay. With that, this will require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye. Thank you very much. Next is operational item E5, which is action on the super-school breakfast grant. Mr. Wall?
Yes, thank you, Chair Mullen. Our Nutrition Services Coordinator, Bridget Lane, has applied for and received another grant. She's with us tonight to share with you her new grant. Ms. Lane?
So, this is actually the second year that we've received this grant. We applied for the Fuel Up to Play 60 grant in the amount of five thousand dollars for a breakfast initiative. And United Healthcare came in and we were actually awarded ten thousand dollars. So, you can't really ask for anything better than that. We implemented second chance breakfast at North Campus this year with huge success. I believe it was about a 265% increase in breakfast participation. They went from sixty kids to up to 230 on some days.
Okay. Is there any questions regarding that? So with that, we have a, uh, recommended action to accept the Fueled Up to Play 60 and United Healthcare Nutrition Equipment Grant in the amount of $10,000 to fund the super-school breakfast at White Bear Lake area high school, South Campus. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Ms. Beloit? Uh, motion by Ms. Beloit, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Fahy. Is there any discussion regarding the grant? Mr. Wilson?
Um, I just, probably guilty of preaching to the choir here, but grant writing is often difficult, always tedious. And Bridget, I just want to commend you for your effort in doing such a great job in procuring that grant.
Thank you.
Well done.
Mr. Chapman?
And I was just going to echo that. Great work. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? This two early crier, roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye. Thank you very much. Um, with that, we'll move on to E6, which is the action on the property and casual insurance for 2018-2019. Mr. Wall?
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kazmercheck. The district has maintained membership in the Minnesota Interscholastic Trust, MIST, since the 2014-15 school year. At that time, we were the seventh school district to, to join the trust and that's up to 23 members now. With the formation of MIST, districts came together to, uh, utilize a risk-sharing and cooperative purchasing structure to purchase property and casualty insurance. And so in doing so, we saw an improvement in the quality of insurance that we were getting and we saw a dramatic decrease in the pricing. So with us tonight is the newest member of the board of the Minnesota Interscholastic Trust, just voted in recently as our Director of Finance, Tom Wazork, and he'll share a little bit about the new rate.
Welcome, Mr. Wazork.
Good evening, board. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Um, this past year, we had a, um, property and casualty insurance, um, quote of $282,076 expiring. Um, so with the, with the proposed, um, proposal for, uh, 1819, it'll be $289,138, which is approximately 2.47% increase, which is a very small increase in the insurance world. And, uh, so I would recommend that we would, uh, accept that quotation for the next school year.
Okay. Uh, we have a recommended action to move approval of the property and casual insurance missed in the amount of $289,138 effective July 1, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. Is there any discussion or questions regarding the missed? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye. And we are covered again. Next, uh, item, we'll move to E7, which is the action on the workers' compensation insurance, 2018-2019. Mr. Wall?
Thank you, Chair Mullen. The district carries worker compensation insurance to reduce risk related to employer injury. Tonight, we're presenting the quote for the 2018-2019 school year. Um, I'd like to note that in this case, we, uh, we have, we have two years of declining rates, so we're feeling pretty good about that. And to remember that anytime we see rates going down, that's money that goes directly to the classroom. We look at the last one of MIST and the amount of money the district has saved over the last five years with that agreement. And now our workers' comp insurance dropping two years in a row. That, uh, good purchasing opportunities like that result in money going directly to the classroom. Uh, Tom Wazork, Director of Finance, will share the new rate.
Along with the new rate, um, we are also seizing opportunity to accept the quote of increasing our, uh, per occurrence from $500,000 to a million. So we'll increase our, our liability exposure at the same time. So, um, this renewal is kind of odd because our experience mod went up a tick, but we have, but the rates went down. So that's why we're seeing the decrease in the premium. So, um, this will be, I think, the fifth year with the, if I remember correctly. Um, so I would recommend that we, uh, accept the quotation of $573,885.
With that, we have a recommended action to move to accept the quote at $573,885 from Dakota Truck Underwriters, uh, for the workers' compensation insurance effective July 1, uh, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellison. Is there any questions, comments? Ms. Beloit?
Just a quick question. Why are the four states excluded from this? Ohio, North Dakota, Wyoming?
I do not know that. I'm guessing that they might have their own health, uh, worker comp programs within their own state.
Yeah, they're, they're monopolistic states. They run their own work comp programs.
That's what it is? Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Chapman?
Um, there's been talk, I know right along of, um, MIST having a workers' compensation arm at some point, or at least that was kind of the initial thought process. Just curious where that's at and.
I can take a crack at it. And Tom, I don't know if you've attended, if they've discussed that yet. So there was, there was talk, um, I don't know, go back to the property and casualty. I just want to show the, just to give some context. So back in 2013-14, the premium of $446, when we just did the, the traditional coverage, our quote would have, for 1415, would have been up over $500,000. And if you were on the board, Kim, at the time, and so you were part of those conversations. And so, so clearly, we, um, we benefited greatly from this, um, this arrangement with these other school districts where we formed this group. Um, the, the talk at the time was that while we, we experienced some savings here, the savings that we would have, that we would experience, and I, I don't know if there's still talk about this, I haven't been on, I was on the board too, that Tom is now on. There was talk about the fact that, um, if we could somehow do the same thing with workers' comp, the savings would be even more substantial than what we experienced with the property and casualty. But we never were able to get the, over, over the, uh, approval hurdle from the, what's the agency?
Commerce.
Yeah. Department of Commerce would, we did, they just, we couldn't quite get there as a, as a group. But I, um, and I don't know what the efforts have been in the last year or two. I think, um, up to the point where, um, where I was still on the board, I think we were still working on it. But, um, um, you know, I, I don't know. I think the effort will still be there. I think it still makes sense if we can get to that point. I just don't know what, um, Tom will know as we go forward, as he's on that board now, but.
Wasn't that talked about at the annual meeting? Um, so I'm guessing that'll be a topic discussion, discussion.
Yeah. And maybe something happened where it just, it's just not going to happen right now in Minnesota. But, um, but again, I, I certainly hope it does because that, everything, everything that we could tell, that, that would be where school districts could save a lot of money, even way more than what we've been saving on the property and casualty, so.
I already know that for next year, we'll be up to 24 districts with MIST. One, one additional one has been approved for July 1st.
Yeah. It, uh, every once in a while, we get called from, from a district wondering about this. What is this MIST? And they think we're up to something. Well, we're not really up to something. It's actually a pretty good program. You should join us. That's what I say. So, yeah. Thanks. And I don't, again, I don't, I didn't mean to throw off your presentation, but if you want to go back up to the workers' comp. Um, I will say too, that, um, even back when we made the change in 2014-15, that $686,000, um, we changed carriers at that time. And the, uh, the carrier that we had been with, the quote from them was well over a million at, at that point. And so there was some question about this Dakota Truck company. Nobody had heard of them and they've actually proven to be very, you know, very good to work with and proven to be very, as you can see, a pretty successful program. And they, they've helped us bring our experience mod downward, um, which is in part, which is why we see the, the rates going down, so.
Mr. Chapman?
One other question. Um, Mr. Wazork, you had mentioned that the, uh, mod ticked up a little bit. Do you remember what it was last year, if you recall?
It was 1.10 and it went up to 1.11.
Just.
So it's, it's 1.11. When I said tick, I meant.
Yeah.
The reality was a little.
By definition, it was a tick, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the action item? Uh, with that, this will require a roll call.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye. All right. We are covered. With that, we will move to operational item E8, which is action on the lead-in water model plan. Um, Mr. Wall?
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board, and Dr. Kazmercheck. Uh, new legis, legislation has been passed requiring the district, uh, to test for lead-in water. To give us some background information on what we've been doing in White Bear Lake in the past and to tell you about our plan is our facility supervisor, Dan Rozier.
Welcome, Mr. Rozier.
As I hope most of you know, uh, in White Bear Lake, we've been testing for lead-in water since 2005. So, uh, this legislation is just pretty much confirming a plan. And, uh, what we did is confirm the commissioner's plan. The Commissioner of Education wrote a plan up for schools. Many schools weren't testing for lead-in water. And a Channel 5 news report about a year ago kind of brought that to everybody's attention, which resulted in increased legislation. So the legislation just confirms what we've been doing. Um, we're, we're, uh, required to send a written prep plan in, uh, and that's why we're bringing it to the board. We went over to our plan and the commissioner's plan, and our plan was pretty tightly aligned with the commissioner's plan. So we've got a great program in place and, uh, today, we hope you approve the plan.
Right there. With that, there's a recommended action to approve the proposed lead-in the drinking water testing plan. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Ms. Fahy. Uh, are there any questions? What, uh, any question? Mr. Wilson?
Well, first off, Dan, kudos for lead testing before, long before it was required. Um, excellent vision, excellent foresight, and obviously impacting the safety of our students, which is paramount for us all, I would hope. Um, a few technical questions. When I read through the, you know, prevention, uh, advice for reducing lead exposure, it, it's 40 years old, most of it. Um, so that leads me to ask, has the lead plumbing in our district been abated?
There's still some lead solder in our pipes and that's why we keep testing is we do run into some fixtures that'll test high when we do test. And, uh, it's a pretty easy fix it, or it has been in the past. We, uh, when we do get a high test, I'm out there the day after we get the readings. We work with the engineers, shut the water off. Uh, 99% of the time, we have the engineer, uh, replace the fixture with a lead-free fixture. We'll turn the water back on so it can be retested just to make sure that solves the problem. And, uh, so far, it has, so. But we've got a pretty good program. Some, some school districts, instead of replacing fixtures, they'll just flush. They'll have the teacher flush in the morning, custodian flush in the afternoon. That usually solves the problem too, but I don't like relying on people remembering to flush. We've got custodians who are sick, teachers who move rooms. I think flushing, it works great sometimes, but it doesn't work all the time. So we just go right away to replace some fixtures with lead-free and it's, it's, uh, really solved a lot of problems for us.
Now, I realize my next question is largely moot because you have done such a good job of removing lead from our systems. But is there a way to filter lead when it's in, in solution?
We've actually, uh, converted many of our drinking fountains at our schools. We've had some high, higher lead schools where it's kind of been borderline. And we've been replacing the fountains with, uh, bottle fill fountains with the filters in them that you see. We're actually doing Lincoln this summer. We're going to replace all the hallway drinking fountain fixtures with, uh, the filtered fountains. So, uh, that's been doing a, a good job for us too. The, them fountains that have been tested have been very minimal traces of lead that get tested out of those fountains.
And the final one, lead is the only problem mineral that's been showing up in our water?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding the plan? Okay. This will require a roll, let's do a roll call with this.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye. Thank you very much. That will move to operational item E9, which is the, uh, Intermediate School District 916 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Budget and, uh, proportionate share.
All right. Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Yes, Dr. Lovett?
Getting to be long.
Intermediate districts became eligible for LTFM funding two years ago. And it, the LTFM funding replaces their intermediate health and safety levy. The School Board of Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District 916 recently approved its LTFM budget of $105,895. And thus, all, uh, member districts must now pass a resolution approving the budget in order for member districts to levy, um, their portion of these costs. So the approved budget includes the 2019-20 school year and information is included in the packet tonight. White Bear Lake area schools' proportionate share of project costs for fiscal year 2019-2020 is $8,449.32. Uh, the resolution is included in the board packet. And tonight, we're asking the board to move to approve, and it's got a long title, "The Resolution Approving Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District Number 916's Long-Term Facility Maintenance Budget and Authorizing the Inclusion of a Proportionate Share of These Projects in the District's Application for Long-Term Facilities Maintenance As Presented." Period.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Uh, you've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to, uh, stop the recommended action?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Is there any discussion? Ms. Beloit?
Maybe I missed something. How are those percentages figured out? Like who, what alloc, the allocations are?
Each school district has a little different amount. And it's based on, um, enrollment in the school districts, not on participation by, but by enrollment.
Any other questions? Uh, this will require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Are you sure there aren't any more items, Mr. Wall?
Congratulations, by the way.
One more?
Okay. Let's move to the last item on the agenda is E10.
Yeah, well, Tim, I'm going to handle this.
Is the approval of the bid for the phone and voicemail system. Mr. Wall? Just kidding. Mr. Garrison, welcome.
Chair Mullen, Dr. Kazmercheck, members of the board, uh, it is, uh, it's high time that we get a new phone system here in the White Bear Lake area schools. As noted in your background packet, our current system is closing in on about 25 years of age. And the reason we've been able to keep it so long is we've got some really skilled and resourceful technicians who have, um, who have really managed the last, like, three to five years of the phone system as we prioritize our money, uh, for trying to put technology in students' hands. But our current system is no longer supported, nor is it backed up by the companies that sold it. So, uh, it's, it's time to move on.
And we'd like to keep the technicians employed.
Yeah. Letting people keep Petzko happy.
Yeah.
Um, I think I've mentioned to you before that when we look at new technology, big ideas, where, where the first thing we ask ourselves is, does this move us forward as an organization? And I can say definitively, uh, that this moves us forward. It turns out there have been huge leaps in phone, um, technology in the last two and a half decades. It turns out there have been huge leaps in phone technology in the last two and a half decades. So things like integrated messaging, which we don't have right now, which doesn't maybe seem like a huge deal, is a big deal. And will make this a much nicer system. There's actually, on a serious and important note, some really great school safety features that this new system's going to allow us to roll out. And I think, well, hopefully, nobody really notices a new phone in their room. It's just, you know, they pick up a phone, they hear a dial tone, they make a call. There will be some nice other features that I think will help to support the work that teachers do. So we launched a process on the National Joint Powers Schedule, looking at six, we got six different bids back from five different companies. We looked at all, everything that they offered in terms of price, and in terms of support, in terms of features, moved a couple of those forward and entered into direct negotiations with them. Marco, who we're recommending here today, got really creative and actually leveraged some of our current phone system licensing to bring down the cost a little bit, and came back with, with what we felt was a really fair and competitive price, and that's what we're recommending we go with today.
Okay, there is a recommended action to move to approve Marco's bid totaling approximately $384,786.62 for the new phone system. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Any questions? Ms. Newmaster?
I don't have a question, I have a historical comment, I'll keep very brief. But I remember when we were begging to get a phone in our classroom, and there were designated rooms, and I had my own cellphone, and the principal at the time, who shall be nameless, said that would count as the media phone. That was 1996, we did not have phones in our rooms.
How big was your cellphone?
Not that big. It was a safety issue even back then, because whether you had a kid that got ill or had a fight, I mean, it was, this is a basic thing, it's like saying, it's about time, that's all I can say.
Yep, and that year, 1996, is the year that the balance of this phone system went into play, so that was that, that was that year?
And we were begging for a couple of years before that.
So it paid off.
Yeah, sometimes.
It was all because of March.
No, you got it right, 96. You just had to hang in there and buy your own cellphone.
Wait 25 years, we'll do it again.
Any other questions regarding the new phone system? Okay, with that, this will require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Can we call it Hal?
With that, we've.
Call it Hal?
We've gotten a new phone system, thank you very much, Ms. Garrison.
Sorry, Dave.
This is the portion of our agenda that we go into Board Forum. And before I open it up to everybody else, I just want to thank the staff, the cabinet, Dr. Kazmercheck, for an amazing graduation. I really enjoyed myself, really thought that it was great, and I want to thank you all for putting forth the tremendous effort to get our graduates not only through 12 years of school, but through that incredible night, so thank you very much. And then last but not least, Ms. Daniels. I would like to thank you very much for your work and your dedication to, and your devotion to the school district. You will be a bear for life, so thank you very much, and go Bears. With that, I will open it up. Mr. Wilson?
Oh, here, here, to that, and I would like to expand it to all retirees for their service. And I'm very pleased to know the increase in the lengths of service amongst our retirees. Yes, there's still some short ones, but it used to be, you could very much tell that it was the post 96-97 people that were here for a few years and then leaving, you know. And I think we're into long-term, really long-term tenures now with our faculty, and that's very heartening to see, at least for me personally.
Anybody else, anything under, Ms. Newmaster?
I was just going to say, I've gone to many things that were celebrations, and there's been just a diverse, and that's the word I'll use. And it's great to see all kinds of graduations, multiple celebrations with their own unique style. And I think our district is doing a great job of serving a variety of children and really having a happy month. Congrats to all those teachers and support people.
Ms. Fahy?
And I was just going to mention, there were many wonderful, wonderful celebrations. But one I was going to mention on May 24th, the Avid celebration, was South Campus Theater was packed. And looking at my time at Sunrise, when the Avid program was just starting, and now at Central, Sunrise, South, North Campus, we have over 400 students involved in that program. And looking at the seniors, and I think, I can't remember the exact number, but there was a staggering amount of scholarships that they got. Yeah, it was, I heard 750,000, it was, and talking to Rochelle, $750,000 worth of scholarships that those graduating Avid seniors were awarded with. And then also at the celebration, there were two alumni of White Bear Lake that graduated in the Avid program. And one, Zach, who's graduating from Bethel in education and language arts, and described he was the first one in his family to attend college, and the help he got in understanding what college was about and navigating the application process and how to apply for scholarships. And then Ferris was another young man who said he joined Avid in his senior year and had never even thought about really what he was doing after high school. He's now at the U of M doing electrical engineering. And both young men, I know the people that were there, were, did better than I could ever do speaking in public. So that's just one side, I don't want to diminish any of the other wonderful celebrations, but I think being involved in the beginning of that program, it was a real thrill to see South Campus full of people celebrating. Thank you to all the people involved in that.
Well said, Ellen.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Anybody else? With that, I want to, the last thing I want to say is come back next month, because next month is Hawaiian shirt board meeting night, so looking forward to that. We'll hopefully see everybody next month in their favorite Hawaiian shirt.
And no hula skirts.
Oh, grass skirts?
That being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
And we, I'll second that, and we are adjourned, thank you.
Okay, and it is, I have to squint at the time.